One day. I don't say it. A lot of people just do it in their personal car. It's like. A lot of people just do it in their personal car. A lot of people just do it in their personal car. That was nice.
I have those. Sharp little fires. Oh, I got shot back. Very young. Yeah, I got that up. Okay. I wrote with you. I'm all in. You want to be on the.
Yeah. I listen to you.
No, I needed paper. All right.
You know.
Josh. Why? Um, so now I think I probably still have.
I mean.
So. I asked. Yeah.
Are they ready to go out there?
There's one good. Do you want the. For the commissioners?
Do you need a copy? Well, they were put in, but it's now by. So that's why I'm trying to figure out what to do.
I don't like it.
Just someone.
I'm gonna feel like. Yes. What you're at the get. Yeah. Yeah. Just guys. Stop. Second.
You're getting your first. Yeah. Nothing. Don't. I'll be. Actually, I got. I'm not a tech. I don't think there's no. But this is it. Look, yeah. What a yard.
Watch your message.
Sound much better. Want to call the meeting over with the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand. One nation, one God, indivisible, with the great justice of God.
Report any executive sessions?
Uh, yes, as per section eight dash eight dash one of the sunshine act. An executive session was held on Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty five at one P M for the purpose of discussing personal matters.
Thank you. Um, let's do the presentation for the woman of care. Um, I know they have two people here that are getting their recognized Julia Crossa and Fana McGowan. Do you want to come down? How about. What do you want to do to the wrong?
I don't.
So this is the recognition of the women who care scholarship based on strong commitment involvement in our community and services. This is students that academically succeed and go back to their community or school and everything. So we appreciate your involvement in your community and all the help you give your schools and people surrounding it. And we continue it going forward. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Gary Boops.
What they was supposed to.
Uh, we are so sorry, uh, Pottsville area and Blue Mountain. My old school.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's always great to see young people doing good things. We read the paper, watch T V. We always see about bad choices made by young people. People overhear about the good stuff that takes place and we're very proud of you for participating and the support from the group behind you. So congratulations.
Yeah, that same way. It's nice to see young people definitely taking leadership and hopefully our future generation of leaders. So again, to your organization that definitely promotes that, uh, it's it's a great thing. And maybe one of you would like to explain what you do on a yearly basis or whatever, besides the scholarship too, would be great.
Well, we are the chair. We're an organization, the Schuylkill County Women, and one of our annual projects among many in helping the community are to award two one thousand dollar scholarships. And our scholarship is for not only for academics, but for community volunteerism. And we have two exemplary people that we awarded to. We had thirty six applications and it was very difficult. And the youth in our, uh, community are very involved and too often they get missed. And it's wonderful that the commissioners are recognizing them. Thank you. You're welcome.
Would the students like to say something?
Do you just want to say anything after they take pictures of these?
Okay.
Do you just want to say anything?
Um, thank you.
We live free. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All the comments? We're fine.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Uh, Melinda Diver, North Manheim Township. Okay, let's see, couple topics. Actually, I had a different subject I was going to talk on today, but I didn't get all the necessary information. So we'll save that for another time. Uh, looking at under grant writer. No solicitor's office presentation by the Schuylkill County Airport Authority regarding its proposed solar energy project and financing, including the request for the county to guarantee replenishment of the debt service reserve fund of approximately five hundred and thirty thousand dollars and consideration of adoption of the resolution related thereto. Do we have that resolution? Is was that attached to our packet today?
It's published on the county website.
It's on the website?
Yeah.
Okay.
And and was proposed yesterday.
Okay, okay, I'll look that up then. Uh, it's not posted outside, though.
It's posted on the county website.
Okay, but not outside the doors. Okay, thank you for that. Um, so this solar project, I'm assuming that that was placed, the airport authority placed that out on bid? Or has it?
When they do their presentation, they can address it.
Okay, so y'all don't know either. Okay, gotcha. Okay, yep, just wondering if R Qs or R F Ps were, um, sent out on that. Uh, great P A, as I call it, wee, wonder how how much those solar farms are really paying off? Especially given, look at the weather we've had, how many days of rain? I think, uh, Schnedeker said the other day, we've had thirty, maybe thirty five out of fifty something days. We've had measurable rain, not just a little drizzle, but measurable rain. Okay, uh, another topic near and dear to my heart. Days. Can I help you?
Yeah, I was just making a comment saying that it's it's light that drives the panels, not just sun. So you're, you know, your comment was a little off, that's all.
And as I said, Mr. Whitty, great P A. How much light really have we had except artificial? So thank you for that. Days of the absentee elected official are over. The taxpayers and voters of this county will no longer tolerate elected officials who perceive coming into this courthouse as an option rather than their job requirement. I'm sorry if you were elected to office and perhaps you have young children, you have aging relatives, you have grandchildren, you have other jobs, your side hustles, as I call them, that require your time and attention. You need to hire whatever individuals are necessary to help you accomplish those side hustles. And instead, you need to actually show up to the county courthouse to do the job that you were elected by the voters of this county to do. Welcome to the real world. You might might have to hire a babysitter, you might have to hire a caregiver, you might have to, uh, hire other individuals to help you take care of those other jobs that you have on the side. And instead, actually show up to the courthouse to do your job. I don't know where we've gotten off track. I know back in the day, they said that row office positions were considered political payback positions. And then if some individuals showed up for fifteen or twenty minutes a year, that would be exaggerating it. Wow, are you kidding me? Like I said, those days are over.
Melinda's fine.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Those days are over and the taxpayers and the voters of this county will not tolerate it any longer. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Morning, Chair. Morning.
Jeff Dunkle Palavato. Uh, just piggybacking off of that, as of this morning, three O row office people were not in the building when I arrived. I guess they're doing Zoom meetings at home. Uh, ninety six thousand dollars a year out of taxpayers' pockets being paid to not show up at work. Uh, Larry, go off on what something you said last week, uh, when you were coming here with the applesauce incident, uh, about having your your daughter with you. Is any employee in the courthouse able to bring their child there? Two employees asked me to ask that, if they were able to bring their employee to work.
Yeah, I don't.
But at any day or?
Not any day. I just had the mail link submitted with me.
Okay. All right, uh, nothing on Stevens yet?
No, nothing on Stevens.
Gaffney?
No.
She still claimed that she was on F M L A when that was illegal. Did anybody look up the warrant list for bench warrants?
No, that's not my. I don't have the bench wars.
Maybe you should.
Maybe the the A's office does, that's mine.
Yeah, I think it would be good if the county officials look at the warrant list and let us know where their family members are. Uh, coroner's office, another joke. Uh, big shout out to all the men and women that fought that fire this morning. Uh, didn't know what they're getting into in a building like that. Also, the nine one one center, those guys have multiple calls this morning and they handled it great. Uh, so hats off to them. But again, coroner's office being in that building, I know you agree with it, Larry, that you want to move it. Uh, but having to move people's bodies out to funeral homes and worry about radiation and all that kind of stuff. He's renting that building out to random people. The Red Cross is there to take two or three, four people displaced by a fire. He doesn't even have a permit to rent the coroner's office out from New Philadelphia Borough. Does anybody, are you guys aware of that, the solicitors? You guys signed a contract, reviewed a contract, and you're renting in a building that New Philadelphia Borough did not give a rental permit to. So technically that office is, they're illegally. Are you guys aware of that? And then he increased the rent from two hundred dollars a month to twenty five hundred dollars a month out of the taxpayer's pocket. Are you guys aware of that? I'm asking, do two of yous are here? Either one of you is aware that you do not have a proper legal permit to rent that building?
Your comments are just.
I I'm asking you guys, this is the taxpayers on the hook here.
Your comments are directed to the commissioners.
And I'm asking you guys, you couldn't respond to an email from last week either. So again, I'm asking you, are you aware that you do not have a proper re- uh, rental permit for the property in New Philadelphia?
We're not aware of anything from middle court. In Philadelphia, there's not a project. Honestly, they have a submission.
Okay, well, Doc Moylan's well aware of it, so you guys are operating illegally in there.
Yeah, but there was rented out to a doctor down below.
Again, it's all illegal.
I thought that one, because he was there forever.
There's no proper permits and.
That's between New Philadelphia Doc and.
I get that.
They do it accordingly, Jeff.
Time, Jeff. And also, there's no additional, from what I gather, there's no additional backup power source for that. When the power gets cut.
We're addressing that already.
We're, yeah, but we're addressing it afterwards. I mean, this is something that this office needs to be out of there. Obviously, I mean, it's convenient that building can't get sold, the zoning gets denied, and now we catch it on fire.
That's a pretty strong accusation.
Other, I'm just saying, it's very odd that the chain of events here, you know what I mean? It's not an accusation, it's just how the cookie crumble. One last thing is.
Time, Jeff.
All right, I'll come back. I'll take full three minutes later.
That's a very long meeting today.
Any other public comment? The county's move out to be in the grant writer, I'll brief you in as much as you possibly can.
Good morning, commissioners. Today, I'm requesting approval of a contract for five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars with M and L Associates preparation of Home American Rescue Plan application. And the next one, I am requesting, um, immediate approval. Approval of change order number one for eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars to a C D B G demo contract with portable construction and demo LLC, increasing the contract from twenty three thousand four hundred forty four dollars to forty two thousand two hundred forty four dollars.
Where's the damage?
This one is at thirty four East Center Street. Lot and they said.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order number one.
Second, want a question?
Commissioner Kadura?
Yes.
Commissioner Monirton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Thank you.
Solicitor's office?
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, this morning, there will be a presentation by the Schuylkill County Airport Authority and its consultants regarding the authority's proposed solar energy project and financing. Included in the formal request to the county will be the guarantee of the replenishment of the debt service reserve fund of approximately five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, and then ultimately consideration of adoption of the resolution related thereto, which would be one of the agenda for next week's meeting. So at this point, uh, I would call on the representatives of the Schuylkill County Airport Authority to make their presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Member of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all. My name is Marty Cerullo. I'm the solicitor for the Schuylkill County Airport Authority. And on behalf of the authority, I am very grateful for the time with the commissioners and all the county representatives to discuss the proposed solar project that we have undertaken and the request by the authority of the county for assistance in connection with the financing for that program. There are members of the authority present this morning to express their appreciation and the support for the project. Chairman Rob Sterling, Keith Mosser, Larry Whitting, Colonel Craig Ray. Also representatives are present for the authority, the professional consultants they have engaged for this project. Quandl Energy Solutions, represented today by Bud Quandl, Rob Strickler, and Sean Nicholson. And the authority's underwriters, proposed bond financing, the firm of Raymond and James, represented by Scott Kramer and Ryan Brockman. I'll take just one quick second relative to Quandl Energy Solutions to address the questions posed by Ms. Diver. The authority is operating under the guaranteed energy savings statutes. And as such, there is there is a protocol in that statute for how you request qualifications and select the party that will undertake the, uh, project. That process was followed last year. There were several proposals submitted and the Quandl firm was selected as a result of that process. So it's not the same thing exactly as a bid for a contract, but it is a request for qualification process and that was followed. The authority board is very appreciative of all the support the county has provided over the years financially and otherwise. If you turn to the first page after the headings in the booklet, there's a sheet that enumerates the benefits, which we respectfully submit the authority provides for the county and the citizens through the operation of the airport. I'm not going to read it because you have it there, and I think there is a booklet spread throughout the room so that people can look at that. While the airport is a significant benefit to the county, including for economic development purposes, it has been the case historically, in addition to the revenue which the authority generates from its operations, the county has provided annual financial support to some extent for annual operations, but more distinctly with respect to project funding, where the authority needs a local match to accompany funds received from the Federal Aviation Administration or the State Bureau of Aviation. So the county has always been very helpful with that. And while we appreciate that, it's been a long term goal, both the county commissioners and the authority, to try to have the authority achieve financial self sufficiency. That's been somewhat challenging and many options have been reviewed over years. Now the authority has determined that this proposed solar project can help achieve that objective, particularly in light of federal legislation, which now allows tax exempt enterprises such as the airport authority to receive federal funding in support of these projects, whereas private parties receive tax credits. If you're not a taxpayer entity like the authority, then you can't use the tax credits. But now the federal government provides funding directly. And additionally, at the state level, there is legislation that parties, whether municipal entities or private, can be paid by the utility at what's called the utility cost to the pair if they put up solar projects that are of the size of three megawatts or less. That covers the grid and energy projects, but today we're here about solar. So the nature of the authority's request to the county today, in connection with the bond financing, is that the county issue a guarantee of a portion of that financing. The guarantee would be with respect to the annual debt service reserve fund, that if that were ever called upon, the county would assist the authority in helping to replenish that fund. You'll see that the structure of the financing includes, uh, also refinancing some existing obligations of the authority that involve the county. One would be the repayment of a direct loan from the county to the authority. That was comprised of about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And this financing would also repay a loan from M Penn Bank, which was used to extend the runway at the authority. The county had issued a guarantee of that loan, so that guarantee would be terminated. We've tried with the assistance of the professional consultants of the authority to structure the project in a manner that mitigates any and all operational and financial risks associated with the project. And assuming that the project proceeds and is financed successfully, the goal is that the county would not have to continue subsidies beyond calendar year twenty twenty seven. It is also the authority's intention that the authority, not the county, will bear all the costs in connection with the project, including the necessary presentation to the Department of Community and Economic Development, preparation of all the legal documents and all associated costs. In the interest of time this morning, I'm not going to turn it over to the gentleman from Quandl Enterprises, Quandl Energy Services, to give you a brief overview of the solar project. And then most significantly, Scott Kramer, Raymond James will outline the financial projections. All those materials are in today's handout, as is the form of resolution of the authority's request that the county commissioners adopt at your public meeting next week. Again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Good morning. My name is Sean Nicholson. I'm the Director of Product Development for Quandl Energy Solutions. Um, quick history, we've been working with the airport for about a year now. We have done solar analysis for actually three different parcels on the airports. Um, the one shown in the parcel, in the pamphlet is the is the final selection for several reasons. We have cut the energy energy production for this array at about four point nine million kilowatt hours. We include a safety factor top of that, which is why we see it slightly lower in the actual production out there that we're that we're using. And we performed layer analysis, well and delineation study, and several other studies that make this a a great site for solar in the airports. Um, and to touch more on the financials, I'll turn it over to Raymond James.
Good morning. Scott Kramer, Managing Director with Raymond James Financial. Um, I'm going to speak to the pages that are about halfway back through the handout. On page two, first, a little bit of background on the current relationship that exists between the county and the airport authority. Several important points, as Marty mentioned, uh, the goal here is to kind of right the ship, if you will, and put the authority on solid financial footing. Currently, the county subsidizes the airport authority somewhere between a hundred and ten and two hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. Uh, the current, um, arrangement between the county and the authority is that the county guarantees about. the county guarantees about $453,000 of existing debt. As Mr. Cirillo mentioned, that's a series of 2018 notes with Mid Penn Bank that we're looking to pay off as part of this project, and a series of 2013, which was a loan for the hangar project. That's currently a relationship between the county and the airport authority. As Mr. Cirillo mentioned, the game changer over the last year has been the Inflation Reduction Act. So now the airport authority has a unique opportunity to take advantage of the federal tax credits that are available for solar. Upon completion of this project, the airport authority looks to receive just short of $2.7 million of credits from the federal government. We plan to use a million dollars of that credit to pay down the associated debt with the project, and we're going to set aside a million 687 in an additional reserve fund over and above the reserve fund that we're asking the county to guarantee. So a fair amount of belt and suspenders, if you will, for the financial process here. There are two other credits at the bottom of that page, roughly $1.3 million of additional credits that the airport authority will apply for and hopefully receive, one of which is the low-income adder. As Mr. Cirillo mentioned, we're looking for the county guarantee on roughly $585,000 of a reserve fund. That number is contingent upon market conditions and the term of the financing. As we've been working through the numbers, the financing was 30 years. We've tried to shorten it to 25 years to shorten up and pay less in interest over the life. Page three of the handout, very quickly, I know you have a big agenda. The goal here is to put the authority on solid financial footing so that each year, the authority is not coming to the county commissioners and asking for subsidies to balance its budget. As we've mentioned, this is a once-in-a, you know, generation opportunity to take advantage of these tax credits. Once the solar array is up and running, the authority should be on its own two feet and producing excess cash flow over and above the debt service on the bonds. As we've mentioned, there's going to be a conversation between the county and the authority, how to manage those reserves over time. We're going to pay down the debt with a million dollars of the reserve at the end of the project. The authority and the county will have the ability to refinance the debt and pay down the debt as those reserves build up, and at the first available opportunity to pay down the debt, which I think is an important piece of getting out of that relationship as soon as possible. And real quickly, page four, there's a lot of numbers on the next two pages. I would point to the left side of the page, which, as I mentioned, we're refinancing those two existing loans that currently exist with Mid Penn Bank and the county. We're going to pay them off, restructure them as part of the financing that the airport authority will do. Far right-hand column, I think, is the most important column, which is the cumulative solar cash flows over the life of the solar array are just shy of $13.5 million. And each and every year after the array is up, we're expecting significant cash flow to bolster those reserves that we're putting in place upfront to further insulate the county from ever needing to draw on that reserve fund. I think the end game here that we've all been talking about is to right the ship at the airport authority and create a situation where they can not only balance their own budget and not have to come to the county each year for assistance, but also be able to do the things that they want to do long-term in terms of applying for grants, using the additional funds here to make improvements at the airport authority that I think are long overdue. So with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
And this is figured out, even if the S-Rex market tanks, this is still figured out to be a viable project?
Yeah, so one of the things that the airport authority is considering is selling the S-Rex upfront, which will be an additional roughly $600,000 of revenue, which hedges against that risk. That's a very good question.
And this is approved?
Just that, again, the total amount that we're going on the line for is the $585.
That's correct.
Then, this might be a question for Marty. How long has the county subsidized the airport?
Well, Commissioner, I've been a solicitor for 43 years. Every one of those years, I don't know how much longer than that, but at least for the last 43 years.
Why are up, Marty? You said that they have reserve fund if called upon. You know, the projections this project don't ever have a receivable situation where it could ever happen.
Right, and I would emphasize in answering your question, Commissioner, that the numbers that Raymond James has presented, with the tax credit available upfront, and then after the project is built, there will be enough money in escrow for the first four years that there'll never be any call on the debt service reserve fund in those four years. And by the time you get through the first four years, obviously, you should have the system and conceivable bugs worked out. So the projections do not anticipate any call on that debt service reserve fund.
And it also includes, say, their airplane misses the runway, crashed into solar, there's business interruption insurance involved too, right?
Yes, sir. There are two forms of insurance that the authority will put in place. Typical property insurance that any owner of any enterprise would have, that if the panels were damaged, they would be replaced by that insurance. In addition to that, the term you just used, business interruption insurance, that would generate for the authority a payment from an insurance company to replace the revenue which the solar panels would have generated, so that there's no need to interrupt the debt service payments. The ad insurance replaces the revenue stream. So again, nothing is perfect. Everything doesn't always work as designed, but the authority and its consultants have tried to anticipate every conceivable risk and have an answer to it.
One more question. If this, for whatever reason, the feds change their mind, this goes away, the project is not going to go forward, right?
If, in the tax legislation that's working its way through Congress, if this program were eliminated, that's correct, Commissioner, it would not go forward. As currently constituted, the legislation is completely consistent with these projections based upon what the House of Representatives have proposed. This project still is qualified and will get the credits. It depends what the Senate does, it depends what the ultimate legislation is. But your comment is based on the fundamental premise that this project is premised on having that funding from the third level. If that funding somehow disappeared tomorrow, you would have no exposure or any guarantee because the project would not be done.
And if the project started, gets started, it would be protected from that law. Am I correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. There's a concept in the law, it's kind of like grandfathering. It's called a safe harbor. Technically, the way that works on the Internal Revenue Code, and this is true with county projects when you finance various things, under construction is a term of origin in the Internal Revenue Code, which means that you have at least encumbered the first 5% of the construction budget. This project is positioned that immediately upon knowing it's approved and the financing closing, there would be the ability to order the solar panels, and that would warrant you to fill that 5% requirement. So we would satisfy the legal requirements. Six months later, if the law changed, we would be unaffected by that.
And also with the plug into the grid, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, you have to have the permission to plug into the grid too before we move forward with the project.
That's correct.
PPL, so PPL doesn't give that approval, project stops there. If anything changes in the federal government massively, the project stops there.
Correct.
Okay, before you get to any point where there's any debt incurred.
That's right. We would do that beforehand.
Way beforehand.
Yep.
And then, where these panels are being placed, it wouldn't have any impact on any future development of the airport?
No, Commissioner. Obviously, that's a great concern to the airport authority in terms of the operation of the airport, which is fundamental purpose of the authority. Its purpose isn't to have a solar project. So the panels will be treated with a coating so that they don't reflect and cause a glare. They'll be positioned in such a manner that they're directed away from the airport, and they have some degree of mobility to adapt to the conditions, sunshine day to day. So that's right. The design is very carefully taken into account by the Quandl people that it does not interfere with the airport operation.
And this is for the Quandl folks. My understanding, there's a project working with the PPL for air connectivity, right?
Correct.
That's on schedule, right? That's on, you're currently negotiating with PPL to get permission connected to the grid, so.
Correct. We've suspended that application, and we're still waiting for final approval. We've been in communication with that, and we're seeing any issues at this time.
And this will also give the airport authority the ability to use those funds for matching grants, to be able to fix things and be able to do more stuff without coming to the county for that one.
Yes, sir. That's the goal. That's correct.
And I guess I'm also correct, when we did the runway extension, that opened the availability of more accessible to get grants. Again, you would have to come back to the county, which we've done in the past, to do the match. This would give you the availability to add things, hangers, or whatever you see fit out there using this reserve.
Correct. That's correct. Your support of the expansion of the runway was critical there. That project, I answered Commissioner Cudor's question myself, I was a solicitor for 43 years. I have to guess the discussion of expanding that runway was 25 years ago. But it was critical, and it has definitely expanded the utilization of the airport. Getting a 5,000-feet runway, I'm not really an expert in aviation, but I've learned enough that 5,000 feet is a critical benchmark for the insurance industry and for pilots for commercial operations. If they want a runway of that length, because that's a safety factor, it makes a difference if the runway is wet and so forth. There's additional distance to have for stop. So that 5,000-feet runway being hit two or three years ago was very important to the airport, and it lets open a lot more opportunities in the future. It has increased the amount of traffic through the airport and means a leg which generates revenue because of sales of fuel and so forth. So runway leg is a very good point for the airport operation.
I'd just like to commend the Mr. Cirillo and the airport authority for bringing a proposed to us. So a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of folks spent. Remember, the authority is not a paid position, it's a volunteer position. So they're, these folks already put their heart and soul into it, and I really appreciate what they've done in packaging projects, so.
I agree.
Definitely. I think they have their, people that are in aviation have other things of getting available funds and so forth, and it's the best thing that I've heard to hopefully to make it sustain itself over the years and future years.
Yeah, I know that you've looked at numerous options to try from putting a warehouse on there, but without the infrastructure, water, sewer there, no big warehouse wants to come there because they don't want a well and septic system, they just don't pay utilities. So I know they've explored multiple options for on-site sewage for warehousing for everything. So far, this is the only project that I've seen or heard of that will have a positive impact on that. Again, the cost of the council costs if you make a comment.
So I certainly, thanks for your comment. But I also have the experience of owning an operating, like one may, a lot solar farm, which is about a third of the size of what we're doing here. And the assumptions that have been made of this project are far more conservative than what I actually realize in our solar project, on our solar farm. We've been extra expensed by, you know, somewhere between $30, $35, we did, we get a hundred extra expenses. And we've been successful in doing that. That's the current rate of them. So this is close to zero, which is not what we're realizing. The degradation of our solar panels over the last 15 years has been minimal. So we're still realizing the solar power, even with the greatest, greatest pain that we had, and it's still performing well. So I just want to share with you that the experience I had, the risks with doing this are minimal.
Thank you. Any other comments on the airport authority? Let's move on to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now hope everyone will clear out. Now, off this face. 911 Communications.
Good morning, commissioners. Four items. First one is agreement with Essential Management Solutions and Possible for General Consulting Services and Project Management Services. Consulting $12,260 a month, project management $7,000 per month, and the agreements for 12 months commencing July 1 and due 30. And there hasn't been an increase in that agreement for several years. Second one's renting elevator, replace channels, realign pistons, and replace the seals for the passenger elevator, which includes furnished labors and materials. The cost of the proposal is $12,254. You rode the elevator about halfway up, you hear a thump. So taking care of it.
I wrote it the other day. I was afraid it would get stuck in.
We're taking care of the thump, so. Next one is motion to enter agreement with Unified Power West Norristown, PA, replace 400 batteries in our five UPS units, and the cost is $15,445.85. And it's like four-year or five-year replacement. They commit and do an annual PM service on it, and the last time they were in, they said the batteries are going to need to be replaced. And we did replace them five years ago, so it seems to be in the cycle, the batteries. And the last one is the agreement with Unified Power West Norristown. Again, this is for the maintenance of the Eaton 48KW UPS system, at an annual cost of $6,360 per year. It's a three-year term on added contract, and that will commence October 1, 2025. Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. I'm seeking approval to appoint the following individuals to the Tax Assessment Board of Appeals for the purpose of hearing appeals being scheduled in. This is going to change. It needs to be August, September, and October 2025, related to any tax assessment appeals filed by property owners at the rate of $30 per hour. Francis Spoke as the Chairman, Timothy McInley, and Anthony Prudential. That is for the annual awards.
That's an all-award, right?
Yes. I'm also seeking approval to hire the following individuals to the Auxiliary Board of Appeals to sit on a three-panel board for the purpose of hearing appeals being scheduled in August, September, and October 2025, related to the valuation established by Vision Government Solutions at the rate of $20 per hour. Douglas Litwiler, Union Township, Kathy Galley, Norwegian Township, Mike McGinley, West Penn Township, Sean McGuire, Ryan Township, and James Gustus Pottsill. Thank you.
Christie, one more. My understanding that the full-time board that we had, would be doing the commercial places, right?
That is correct.
That's expeditional training, and they'll be having commercials looking at.
Correct. Thank you.
A motion is requested to approve an encroachment agreement between the county of Schuylkill, the Schuylkill County Municipal Authority, and PPL Utilities to install an anchor guide along the north side of Keystone Boulevard within the road right of way as part of a larger service request to Wyman's Expansion Project. Is the same encroachment agreement signed in March of 2024 adding the anchor guide? Both SETCO and SCMA have no issues with the encroachment, as it does not appear to impact any existing facilities. A motion is requested to approve a contract with land studies to complete flood hazard mitigation site assessments as outlined in their proposal. This project is part of the county's grant application work and is being recommended by the county's Resilience Advisory Committee. Thank you.
So, Lisa Muscito?
Good morning, commissioners. We are seeking the approval of the county's annual fall cleanup. Fall cleanup will take place among 16 sites. They will be the same as previous two years. Pottsill, Myersville Borough, CES Landfill, Dorrville Borough, North Manhattan Township, Schuylkill Haven Borough, Wayne Township, Porter Township, Pine Grove Township, Tamaki Transport Station, Ringtown Borough, New Ringled Borough, Flannoy City Borough, Branch Township, East Union Township, and Tremont Borough. This year's fall cleanup, accepted item list will tie to appliances and Loki items, and it is open to all school county residents. It should also be noted, there will be, there will not be any electronics accepted this year. Fall cleanup will start on September 2, 2025, and end September 13, 2025. The Department of Environmental Protection reimburses the county up to 50% of the cost for this event. Advertisement for the event, as well as the Schuylkill County website, will have exact location provided for each site. We are also looking for approval to advertise for bids for the waste tire collection and recycling. Bids will be accepted in the controllers'office till 3:00 p.m. Monday, July 14, with a bid opening in the Commissioners'Boardroom on Wednesday, July 16, 2025, at 9:00 a.m., and reported at the work session meeting of the Schuylkill County Commissioners with a tentative bid award at the Board of Commissioners meeting on July 23, 2025. We are also seeking approval to advertise for bids for Loki item collection. Bids will be accepted in the controllers'office till 3:00 p.m. Monday, July 14, 2025, with a bid opening in the Commissioners'Boardroom on Wednesday, July 16, 2025, at 9:00 a.m., and reported at the work session meeting of the Schuylkill County Commissioners with a tentative bid award at the Board of Commissioners meeting on July 23, 2025.
I'd like to make one quick comment. I have a nice buddy, Mrs. Downford Centraria, down from Big Five Run, used to be tied.
Used to be tires, sofas, refrigerator. This has been a big, big, you know, that was a horrible area to replace the dump stuff off because not many people around. So the fact we do this every year and keep this under control is to me is amazing.
Yes, and we've had great success with it. Last year was the busiest year that we've had since I've started. A lot of great work. Thank you.
Skookul County Conservation District.
Larry, could we please just make sure that when the presenters come up to present their items, that they introduce themselves? Because these meetings are being streamed and people at home don't know who's actually coming up to the podium to speak unless they say their name.
Okay.
Who did? Kyle Smith, Solid Waste Recycling.
And Susan Smith also did not hear her name.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelsey Brown, Skookul Conservation District. I am seeking a motion for the approval of the Agreement of Sale on Purchase of the Agricultural Conservation Easement between the Commonwealth Pennsylvania and the County of Skookul, jointly in perpetuity for a total purchase price of two hundred forty-nine thousand and forty dollars, in which the county contribution total is sixty-five thousand dollars. This Agreement of Sale is for the Jerry L. F. Musser Number One Farm, being the parcel tax code IDs of twenty-eight dash oh four dash zero 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 four, twenty-eight dash oh four dash zero 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 seven, consisting of one hundred and twenty-four point five-two survey acres in South Vanheim Township. So seeking this approval with the hopes that it will be ready for the state board meeting in August. Thank you.
M I S.
Connor Matts, M I S. Requesting approval to renew the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement with C D W G. Price for the agreement is two hundred forty-four thousand dollars, one hundred forty, two hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars and twenty cents per year for three years. The agreement for the term is August first, twenty twenty-five, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Emergency management.
Good morning, Nick Crossley, Office of Emergency Management. We have two items this morning. The first is the approval of the Hazardous Materials Emergency Response Agreement with Dauphin County. As required by the Hazardous Materials Emergency Planning and Response Act, every county must designate a PMS certified hazmat team. Skookul County will facilitate reimbursement of response costs due from the responsible party. And in the event of a situation where no responsible party is identifiable or is unresponsive, the county will reimburse Dauphin County through the hazmat fund. The agreement shall be effective for a period of one year. And the second item is for the approval of the State Federal Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-five, Twenty Twenty-six Radiation Emergency Response Fund. This is the RERF grant in the amount of eight thousand one hundred forty dollars. This grant is used for salaries and in the development of improved emergency response capabilities to respond to and recover from radiological accidents or incidents at the Commonwealth Pennsylvania's nuclear power plants, and exercises to measure those response capabilities.
And you're asking for an immediate motion for approval because of switching to Dauphin County from our current plan?
That's correct.
I'll make a motion that we approve the hazmat mercy response agreement with Dauphin County.
Second.
One question.
Commissioner Ecuadora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Office of Senior Services.
Good morning, Deanne Arlovsky from the Office of Senior Services. I know. I could just cry. Okay. Approval of an addendum for twenty-four twenty-five with Mid-Penn Legal Services of Harrisburg for abatement services. There's an increased contract cap of sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars for additional funding from the Department of Aging, as well as an allowable four point five percent increase with a revised contract cap of one hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred ninety dollars for our two contracted attorneys, Attorney Stanley Burke and Attorney James O'Connor, for legal services, allowable four point five percent increase effective as of July first, going from ninety-four dollars and ninety-four dollars and ten cents to ninety-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. The contract cap for Stanley Burke will remain at forty-two thousand five hundred, and Attorney O'Connor at twenty-one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Approval of an addendum with our two adult daycare providers, Tamaka Adult Daycare, and also Avenuz to add the replacement of appendix B county standard terms and conditions. For SANS, their, for Service Access Management and Abilities in Motion, there has also been a replacement of appendix B county standard terms and conditions. For Mid-Penn Legal, we would like to extend the contract another fiscal year, twenty-five, twenty-six. And their contract cap will be one hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred ninety dollars for abatement services. Okay, so for Stanley Burke and James O'Connor, we would like to extend their contracts another three fiscal years, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight at ninety-eight thirty-three an hour. Their contract caps will be forty-two thousand five hundred for each of their contracts. Okay, and we would like to extend for another three years our adult daycare providers, Tamaka Adult Daycare and Avenuz, for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. The rates will remain the same at sixty-four dollars and eighty cents a day with full meal, and thirty-two dollars and forty-four cents for half-day with meal. The contract caps will remain the same, two hundred thirteen thousand ten dollars for Tamaka, and forty-three thousand four fifty-six for Avenuz. Approval of an addendum with Abilities in Motion at their current rate of seventeen ninety-six, and the contract cap will remain the same at seventy-four thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars, and that will be for extending of the contract to twenty-five, twenty-six. Approval of an addendum to extend the Contract with Service Access Management for Caregiver Check Processing. The contract cap will remain at forty-eight hundred dollars a year, and it will be for five dollars per check processing. Approval of an addendum with the following personal care providers. Caregivers America of Clark Summit, Compass Rose of Pottsville, Accessing Independence, doing business as Independent Living Services of Lancaster, and W A Two, doing business as Family Home Medical Support Services of Matt Carmel, and Maximum Care of Whitehall, P A, all providing personal care services to extend the contract into twenty-five, twenty-six. The contract cap will remain twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents, or the contract rate will be twenty-four forty-one per each contract, and their caps will remain the same as current year. I'm also requesting an approval to advertise through NextStar Media Group, which is W B U R E and W Y O U for forty thousand for the period of June nineteenth to July thirty-first. It'll be for the promotion of our agency services, our senior centers, and our caregiver program that continually underspends. This will also include impressions through banner video online. And for the advertising, I'm just asking if there could be a motion to approve that contract.
Motion approved for the advertising.
I'll make a motion to approve the advertising for NextStar.
Second. One question.
Commissioner Ecuadora.
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you.
Children, Youth.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, we have Core Rumble Children, Youth. We have several items, so I'll try to run through them as quickly as we can here. First item is an addendum to the current agreement with our information system provider of Anco International. This adds an upgrade project for total cost to us at fifteen thousand dollars, three hundred eighty-seven dollars, fifteen thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. We also have an addendum to an agreement with Penn State Health, as Hershey Medical Center out of Hershey. This extends the term period and simultaneously adjusts the per-unit rate to one hundred eighty-eight dollars, changing the end date to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, four point four percent increase to the current rate. We are requesting approval of an addendum to the agreement with Open Door International, a foster care provider, extending the term period to include fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, our current rates and terms, adjusting the end date to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. We have an addendum to the agreement with Friendship House based in Scranton. This addendum extends its term period to include fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six at current rates and terms, adjusting the end date to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. We have an addendum with Pinkney's Vineyard of Faith Ministries, Red Lion, Pennsylvania. This addendum would extend the term period to include fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. It also reduces one of the placement rates, the mother with multiple children rate, to two hundred ninety-three dollars and five cents with a new end date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. We have an addendum to the agreement with the Clock Tower Schools. This also extends the term period for an additional fiscal year, adjusting the end date to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Another addendum, which extends the term period for another fiscal year with K S M S T out of Warrington, Pennsylvania, adjusting that end date to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And we have twelve new agreements to present. Each of these have a term period July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. First is an in-home service provider, Justice Works Youth Care of Pittsburgh. They offer in-home prevention and reunification services. The hourly rates are on the agenda, I'll omit reading them here posted online for anybody viewing at home. The program-funded services include a truancy prevention program, staff based at each of the county's school districts. That rate is remaining the same at four hundred fifty-nine dollars point nine cents per D M. per staff assignment. The transportation program has expanded the thirty thousand dollars per month here, includes a lease of two vehicles and staff to oversee the operation of that program. And then when the service is provided directly, the hourly rate is less than some of their other services. It's at fifty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. We have an agreement with Valley Youth House of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. They offer residential independent living services. The per D M. rates are also listed on the agenda here. Next, we have Jewish Family Services of Greater Harrisburg Incorporated. They provide foster care services with various rates. They also offer independent living services provided directly to recipients of our services. The fifteen-minute rate is fifty dollars even for direct service, thirty dollars for administrative services. We have an agreement with the intermediate unit, twenty-nine, Pottsville, Pennsylvania. They provide day treatment services for young people at risk. Per D M. rate for that is two hundred ten dollars, no changes there. We're introducing a new service, their truancy outreach and support services for kids who aren't showing up to school. That per D M. rate is eighty-four dollars and includes documentation of the efforts to engage those kids in school. Contract cap for this provider is at six hundred sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars. We have Families United Network of Muncie, Pennsylvania. They offer both foster care services and residential services with rates listed on the agenda. We have an agreement with Signature Family Services of West Reading, Pennsylvania. They provide in-home and community-based prevention services with an office located here in Pottsville. Parenting and visitation services as well. Hourly unit rates include parenting at seventy-nine dollars per hour. Case for counseling also at seventy-nine dollars per hour. Changes here are to their Domestic Abuse Intervention Program. They are now seeking to focus on providing that service in a group format, which according to the model they're using is a better basis for shared learning between the participants. And so the new components here is that the group would be at four hundred fifty dollars per unit when there are two participants, seven hundred dollars when there are three or more. Another foster care provider, Pine Brook Family Answers, Valentine, Pennsylvania. The per D M. rates are listed on the agenda. And we finally have attorney agreements for the solicitor for the agency solicitors. We have Attorney Karen Riss Miller with a monthly retainer of two thousand nine hundred thirty dollars, eighty-two cents, extraordinary expenses at an hourly rate of one hundred dollars. Also for solicitor for the agency, Mary Kathleen O'Connor of Frackville, Pennsylvania, also with a monthly retainer of two thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and eighty-two cents, and with extraordinary expenses at an hourly rate of one hundred dollars. So no changes compared to last year. The attorney agreements for Guardian Ed Leiden Services, independent counsel for youth involved in dependency court. We have three such agreements. First is with Attorney Thomas J. Campion and Marshall Borah Thornburg Price and Campion of Pottsville, Pennsylvania. The monthly retainer for said services at four thousand three hundred forty-three dollars and six cents, and with extraordinary expenses at an hourly rate of seventy-five dollars. Each of the following two agreements have the same compensation amounts. The next is with Attorney James Conville, Skookul Haven, Pennsylvania, also for Guardian Ed Leiden Advocate Services for dependent, alleged dependent youth. Finally, we have agreement with Attorney Thomas Pelish, the same services and with the same compensation. He's based out of Pottsville, Pennsylvania. One other item to present for informational purposes, the provider who just didn't get their signature in in time for the deadline for today's meeting, may come up for an immediate vote next week. But for purposes of informing the public, that provider is Stepping Stones out of Reading, Pennsylvania. We're trying our best to get our contracts executed before their expiration date here. So we have a good chunk of them done, but there'll be a few more.
Thank you. Next, John. Drug and alcohol. Morning.
Morning. John Reed, presenting on behalf of Belane Gilbert. For drug and alcohol, we have an approval of an addendum to Pyramid Healthcare Incorporated to increase the contract cap from one million one hundred twenty-four thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars to one million two hundred four thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. We also have approval of addendums for six-month contract extensions for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. All contract addendums for the list of providers below will contain the following changes. First change is to extend the expiration date of the contract from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, as per the included extension modification agreement. Also will include added language as follows for services listed in appendix B. The initial authorization request for S C A funding must be entered into the CPR web system no later than seven days after the client's admission date in order to receive approval of S C A funding. For the following services, initial authorization will be limited. We have level one point zero, which is outpatient services. The initial authorization will be three months, followed up by additional three months reauthorization. Level two point one, intensive outpatient services. We'll have an initial three-month authorization request followed up by additional three months authorization, reauthorization request. Level two point five, which is our partial hospitalization services. We'll have an initial twenty-eight day authorization request followed up by additional one to seven day reauthorization request. Level three point one, which is our halfway health services. We'll have an initial thirty day authorization request followed up by additional thirty day reauthorization request. Level three point seven, non-hospital detox. We'll have an initial three day authorization request followed up by additional one to two day reauthorization request. Level three point five, which is non-hospital rehab services. We'll have an initial fourteen day authorization request followed up by additional one to seven day reauthorization request. Level three point seven, which is intensive rehab services. We'll have an initial fourteen day authorization request followed up by additional one to seven day reauthorization request. Then we have four, level four point zero, which is hospital-based detox services with initial three day authorization request followed up by additional one to two day reauthorization request. And then we have the level four point zero, hospital-based rehab services, which will have an initial fourteen day authorization request followed up by additional one to seven day reauthorization request. All other current terms, conditions, services, and rates will be continued through the period of this extension. The following providers will have provided underneath addendums. Crossroads Counseling Incorporated, Clinical Outcomes Group Incorporated, Treatment Trends Incorporated, Genesis House Incorporated, Here Incorporated, doing business as Gate House. Incorporated, Genesis House Incorporated, Here Incorporated, Doing Business As Gatehouse, Pathway to Recovery Counseling and Education Services, Foley Green Brandywine, Wake There Run, Lehigh Valley Health Network Counseling Center, outpatient services, Condensing Incorporated outpatient services, Drug and Alcohol Rehabilitation Services, Doing Business As Mano's House, Fire Tree Limited, Advanced Treatment Systems, Doing Business As Lemon and Treatment Center, Eagleville Hospital, Pennsylvania Counseling Services Incorporated for their outpatient services, Avenue's Recovery Medical Center in Valley Forge, Libertay Incorporated, Carbon Imperial Fight Drug and Alcohol Commission, and Guardian Angel Recovery House. We also have the following list of providers that will also have, besides the changes listed that we just mentioned, will also have an increase in their contract cap. Pyramid Healthcare Incorporated to increase their contract cap from one million, two oh four, six hundred twenty-six dollars to one million, two hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars. Adenzie Incorporated for their inpatient to increase the contract cap from four hundred thousand to four hundred forty thousand. And Marworth Doing Business As Geisinger, Marworth Treatment Center, to increase the contract cap from thirty-six thousand to forty-six thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Task plate?
John?
Yeah.
Is these increases just, I know you guys run your extensions, which is how that to be, are these increases by the beginning of the year, the end of the year? Is that just till the end of the year, or are you considering that until next year?
That's just to get us through the six-month extension period.
Okay. Cause I need to know that because it.
Yeah, but there was not enough in there to overcome the six-month extension period. All the other providers, we believe there's going to be enough to cover the six-month extension period.
Task plate?
Captain, requesting approval of two private sales that are listed in your handout, and the approval of three of your positive sale notes.
Treasurer's office?
The, I, the Scoukou County Treasurer, we have the treasurer's report for May, um, twenty twenty-five, ending balance on all accounts, one hundred and fifteen million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Uh, solicitor's office?
David Rice, Assistant Solicitor. On behalf of the Solicitor's Office, ratify the approval of the Teamsters Local four-two-nine and the County of Scoukou Collective bargaining agreement on behalf of the prison effective January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
And that's contingent for next week, that if you may have to clarify the wording in the uniforms. Or to be taken, if that is a uniform language. Okay. Finance's office?
Legate Attorney Director of Finance, Commissioner, we have submitted items first as a budget adjustment to ensure your information, only to partner at the age of twelve thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars. On behalf of the nine-one-one fund, we are asking for supplemental budget resolution, uh, appropriation resolution for the immediate approval requested for amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. This was at reference to item six on the agenda, twelve thousand, two hundred fifty-four for care of the elevator, and fifteen thousand, four hundred and six for need of replacement of that. I'll be here. On behalf of the Juvenile Probation Department, we are submitting budget, uh, supplemental budget resolution two zero two five dash seven to the amount of six hundred thousand dollars for additional, uh, services within the juvenile probation department. We are submitting supplemental budget resolution twenty-five, twenty zero, twenty-five oh eight for sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars on behalf of drug and alcohol to reconcile the additional federal grants that have been received to provide additional program services. We're submitting budget resolution on behalf of drug and alcohol of two zero two five dash nine for one hundred thousand dollars to recognize additional state grants that have been received and for the purpose of providing additional program services. We are submitting two zero two five dash one zero for twenty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars on behalf of drug and alcohol recognized additional state grants and for the purpose of providing additional services. And finally, two zero two five dash eleven, uh, for sixty-six hundred dollars also on behalf of drug and alcohol recognized additional state grants that have been received to provide additional services.
That a motion to approve the sixth, uh, appropriation, budget appropriation resolution?
So, motion.
Second? Question?
Commissioner Kidora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Kenny Administrator?
Perry Hunter County Penisator, approve the following funding recommendations from the two thousand twenty-five Scoukou County Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as well as the authorization to execute agreements between the county and Scoukou and the service providers listed below on grant approval. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board recommends the following five projects along with an allocation to reserve account. Scoukou Hope Center for Victor's Revenge Fund, seventeen thousand dollars. Scoukou County Housing Authority, ninety thousand dollars. Serviced to all, twenty-two thousand dollars. Scoukou Community Action, one hundred eighteen thousand dollars. And Scoukou Community Action for the Bridge House Program is eighty, sixty thousand dollars. And reserve account is ten thousand, thirty-three, ten thousand, thirty-three dollars.
Anything on juvenile resources?
Uh, good morning, Commissioners and Drug and Alcohol. We have the appointment of Jacqueline Aufer as Recovery Sports Specialist. Rate is eighteen point five eight five eight, effective seven fourteen twenty-five. Additionally, we have informational items in the adult probation appointment. John Adams is an unpaid intern, effective six twenty-three twenty-five, and David Prox three eight fifteen twenty-five. And two items in the Carter's Office, both appointments, John Micah as Deputy Carter, effective six twenty-three twenty-five, per diem not to exceed nine hundred and fifty hours, and Ann Kadoo, Deputy Carter, effective six twenty-three twenty-five, also per diem not to exceed nine hundred and fifty hours. All appointments pending drug tests and physical were appropriate in all actions involving salary or for positions being created are pending salary board approvals.
Just one comment, the, the Commissioners related to the football challenge last night that was brought in, like that away. And, uh, he would have left, it was, every team in the county was there, but fourteen, fourteen schools, Cats Island, Cats Island was there.
The kids did, they did amazing. They raised.
They went, well, in the last eight years, it's gotten above two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars they raised that stays within their school district. The kids, they did, they broke records for weightlifting, for flipping tires, for, I mean, they were, and it was wet. The way the kids were running on that, the field and with it raining was just like, and nobody fell and got hurt, great, it was amazing. He did a great, he did a great job last night.
This was the eighth year, uh, ma- major portion of money goes to support the nurses' factory and for meet needs for, uh, underprivileged kids.
For each of their school. The money stays within their school district for underprivileged kids, so it's a real, it was a really neat event. It was, it was wet. It was wet though towards the end. Kenny, want to say anything?
No. Again, uh, once, uh, a brainchild from Mr. Smart Pack, uh, uh, started it. I remember it starting down at Penn State, and it has grown every, every year. And I'll tell you, if you've been up in North Scoukou, there wasn't a parking place to be found. I, I think I parked an ashtray. But, uh, it, it was big. They had a lot of people, even though the rain was there. And it also, uh, gets the, uh, the kids, uh, enthused not only of playing sports, but also what they were doing is given back to the community also. So, it's a fantastic program that they started. So, it's good for, again, United Way, which is important, uh, that serves a, a lot of agencies. And I've said from day one, a lot of these nonprofits and agencies do things that we, as you heard from our agenda today, that we can't do on delivering services. They pick up the extension of some things we don't. So, the importance of the nonprofits and, uh, along with our agencies definitely help people out there in need, so, super job everyone.
A motion, Senator?
So will, sir.
Salary board? Uh, reported any executive sessions?
There were none.
Public comment, salary board?
I'll try to make it snappy. Linda Dybert Worth Manhattan Township. Okay, once again, uh, just to reiterate, uh, something that Jeff brought up earlier, uh, with the coroner's office and the ability, or maybe the lack thereof, the ability of the county to actually be able to rent that space there, Dr. Moylan's office. So, hmm, guess our solicitor's office is gonna have to do some due diligence on that one. Okay, uh, back to the airport authority. Who owns, who actually owns the property out there?
Eric Authority.
Authority.
Only the authority?
We own property around it, but I don't believe we own.
They own it.
It's in their name, the authority's name.
Okay, so County of Scoukou has no ownership whatsoever on that property?
I think there's some parcels around it.
What, Gary?
Just the road.
The road, okay.
I think there's parcels around it that the county still owns.
Okay, and that's, again, that's tax-exempt property, right? Okay. How do they, how are they currently generating revenue? Do we know?
Uh, through sales of fuels, rentals, I guess, hangar, landing fees. If you land there, you have to pay a fee for landing. So, those type of fees for, they supply fuel for, I believe, lifeline. And I think, yeah, high, and I believe, like, state police come there to fuel the helicopters, and I, I believe some of, when we were there, they were training from Indian Town Gap, and I think they'd come up there two times, depending on what area they were gonna buy fuel.
So, okay, landing fees, hang, hangar fees?
Hangar fees, I would say, hangar rentals. And fuel.
And then there's a trucking outfit that uses the ground.
Oh, for storage.
I forget the trucking outfit that utilizes, I think they run for wedmits, I can't think of that.
Yeah, they, it's trucks, they store, there's sort of trucks there. I believe they, they might have some land lease to.
They use that for them.
For coal to.
Okay.
Mining company.
And there's a lease, that building that used to do, uh, the Votac School, uh, that now it's a, uh, a company that teaches, I think, the driver ed or something up there.
Okay. Uh, according to the resolution, it looks like authority will receive the proposed cash payments from the federal government in lieu of tax credits. The anticipated income to be generated by the solar project and the ability of the airport solar project to cover the projected debt of the project. So, pretty well sounds like the authority is getting first dibs on any kind of cash that's gonna come out of it. So, basically, what I'm seeing is the taxpayers are conceivably on the hook for over half a million dollars, but yet there's nothing in there that says the county and the authority will receive a certain amount of the, of the revenue upfront. It looks like it's only gonna go into the coffers of the authority. Uh, we need to think about that a little bit.
So we won't be subsidizing it like we have the last forty years?
We don't know, Larry. We do not know that.
If it works, we won't be.
The way, the way everything is written in this, uh, the authority is not really on the hook for anything. It's the taxpayers of the county who are conceivably on the hook, not, not the authority.
Just like we are now with the loans and the guarantees that they have.
So, I would like to ask, uh, do we already have PPNL Electric Utilities, the interconnection approval from them?
That's what we just asked. You were in the meeting, did you hear us ask that question?
I'm sorry, it was, people were talking, it was hard for me to hear.
It all depends on them getting onto the grid.
Like, if they can't get the approval, the project's done.
They've applied for the, they've applied for.
If PPNL doesn't do it, the project's done.
When do we expect to hear on that?
Correct. I, I guess PPNL has their own timeline. I, I, if they don't get it within the timeline, if PPNL doesn't do what the project does, if the funding changes and.
So no construction, not, nothing takes place.
Nothing takes place until they get, PPNL says yes.
And nobody knows when we're gonna get that, okay.
They expect it sometime this summer.
They expected, hopefully, by like, July, I would hope.
Okay. And one other question, uh, which of our county solicitor staff is actually, uh, charged with the responsibility of reviewing the agreement?
Well, I guess it would be solicitor Doherty, and Dave Wright, I mean, any, any one of the three solicitors could review it, but I think Paul's gonna handle it honestly.
Okay, Paul Dotty will be reviewing that. Okay. And in the future, if possible, uh, when folks in the audience, and in this case Keith Mosser, who I believe is treasurer for the Airport Authority, uh, it's very difficult, once again, these meetings are being streamed and an awful lot of, of the people from the public are listening in. I'd say almost impossible for anyone at home to have heard the comments that Keith Mosser made when he stood up. Would have been a small matter, I know, he was just trying to add his personal experience.
Yeah, he did.
And probably didn't want his name and all of that on the record.
No, I just, I just don't.
And I know back in the day, I know back in the day, he received.
Melinda, he, he mentioned his name, he stood up and said who he was. Yes, he didn't follow the program up to the podium, but he stood up and said, I'm Keith Mosser, from the Airport Authority. I own a solar thing, it's been his experience that his, his thing with the solar was good. So, yes, he did address.
And back in the day, he received, he also received a one million dollar grant. Of course, that would have been back in the day when Tim Syke was the state rep out there.
Who gave him the direct money?
But he did receive a one million dollar grant.
Where did the million dollar grant come from?
Ask Tim Syke, he was the state rep back then.
Not from the county.
Well, no, not from the county, my God!
Just want to clarify, it was from the state.
The feds didn't have anything to do with that?
I, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. There's a photo op, just look it up, it's out there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Again. Again.
Jeff Donkel Palo Alto, uh, just following up on the Airport Authority, it's great to hear that they wanna be self-sufficient finally. Hopefully, this gets them on the, on the right path. I think, uh, if it works out, it should be good.
Yep.
They were waiting on PPNL back in March when I attended a meeting, so I think PPNL was one of the main problems there to try to get over the hurdle. Uh, but my question is, is it five hundred thirty thousand or five hundred eighty-five that the county's gonna be on the hook for?
Eighty-five, I think.
Okay.
I'll show you this.
I just, it's just a five thirty, so I just wanted to make sure it's correct. And why not have the county get some sort of percentage of the profits from this? I mean, if, for forty-three years, if on average we've given a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year to keep them sufficient, I think it'd be decent for them to give three percent, five percent to the county?
Well, Jeff, that's not something we can't explore in the future, do you know what I mean? There's no reason why we can't explore something, firstly.
Wouldn't you wanna get in on the bottom?
Yeah, but we wanna make sure the project's viable, goes forward first and everything. And we've been subsidizing them for forty-three years.
That's what I mean, so, isn't it time to take them back?
But the idea is, hopefully the county airport, this works, gets them self-sufficient, that they can get their own grants, their own funding to do improvements and do everything. That's the ultimate goal of it. To get it off, that it's self-sufficient.
Right.
Cause the other option was ware, remember when they brought up about the warehousing? They tried to get, and it's just not feasible because there's no infrastructure there.
There is some other deterrent, maybe it's, I mean, the, the bathrooms need to be fixed up, the lobby needs to be, so. Uh, I'm sure, if there's too much money, we'll find a way to get rid of it over there. Oh, I'm sure. Uh, Mr. Dotty did come in after the, the brief part of the meeting he was at, uh, to explain a little bit about the New Philadelphia rental area. Uh, he says the county is exempt due to county code, but I don't think that exempts them from registering with the borough, uh, just.
Well, definitely, like I said, whatever the borough does.
Correct.
Is up to the borough, and then the county will deal with the ramifications.
I, I just know that in, in places where I have commercial properties and I rent them out, I have to fill one out as the landlord, also the tenant has to fill it out so that they're aware who's in the building, if there's a business there, if there's children there, if there's pets, that all has to be filled, what kind of vehicles are there? So, that's in multiple municipalities that I have property, so I'm not sure if you guys are required to fill that out, but, uh, New Philly doesn't have anything on, on books.
I've talked to, I've talked to the mayor before about the, the council people.
And lastly, uh, I've had multiple people, but just one on Wednesday, last Wednesday, tell me, uh, they've been either told or reprimanded about commenting on at least two social media pages regarding the county, uh, mine and someone else's, that their bosses or supervisors have seen them either comment on it or like, uh, like something on it or interact with it, and were told that if it didn't cease, that they would be reprimanded.
I don't know.
If people are doing that sort of thing on their own time and not during courthouse hours.
I'll be, I, I have no, no knowledge of that.
Is, okay, is there a social media policy for the county?
I, not a hundred percent, like, there is some type of social media policies, but I'm not exactly sure what it means.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resource Office, any other public comments for Saturday? Human Resource Office?
Uh, yes, Commissioners, one item of drug and alcohol set salary for Jacqueline Aufer, Recovery Support Specialist, at the rate of eighteen point five eight five eight, effective seven fourteen twenty-five, that's all.
Thank you. Any new business? Any new business?
Most of them, sir.